All right, it's 7 o'clock and I am going to call this meeting of the Denville Board of Education to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Daily Record and/or the Star Ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and at each of the school buildings in the district. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Mr. Luer?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mr. Napoloni?
Here.
Mr. Capello?
Here. Thank you. We'll hold off on the Pledge of Allegiance after the executive session. Mr. Napoloni, would you care to move us to executive session?
Sure. I move to convene in executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss...
Negotiations in legal.
Negotiations in legal. This session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
I'll second that. The yeas?
Yeas.
Yeas.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, we're in executive session at 7:02. I think. Okay. Thank you. We are out of executive session. We postponed the Pledge of Allegiance until the beginning of the public portion, so if everyone will please stand. Right back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And we have some special presentations this evening.
Who's going first? Dr. Collins.
Dr. Collins, yeah?
Sure.
There's a button on there, Sandy.
Yeah, the microphone's not on yet.
You have to push it for a second and you'll see your light come on.
Yep, there we go. Good evening, everyone. Every year we do an annual presentation of our standardized test scores, and as you know, this year was our first year of our PARC results, so this is a baseline year. I'm going to go through some of the data that we have. Right now, the only data that we do have is our own school district data and the state data. In the future, we will also be able to compare to other school districts, the ones that we have selected as similar to our size and demographics as Denville, and also our special education population and any other subgroup. So at this point, we don't have that information, but we can give you the general information and then I will update it on the website so that you can see, once we do have those subgroups, we can see how we fall in those areas as well. What, I got something crazy going on in the screen. There we go. I got two slides in one. Just to give you an idea, I think we all know that the PARC assessment was designed to really correlate to the standards that we're working with under the Common Core. And so with the Common Core changes, we also needed a new assessment. The idea of the assessment is to look at critical thinking and reasoning skills, and because the PARC tests measure, they're more complex, that we do tend to see, we expected to see as a baseline year, that the scores will look lower than our NJAS scores that we had been really working with for more than a decade. So we were more comfortable with that format, and this is the first year of that format. Remember that it is a new baseline, which means that it is not correlated in any way to the NJAS scores. We really can't compare them. There are new proficiency levels, where NJASK had three levels, we are now breaking scores out into five levels, and there are new score correlations, meaning that it used to run from a score of 150 to 300, and now it runs from 650 to 850. So the numbers don't even match up, so you really can't compare the old test scores to the new ones. I'm still seeing the bottom there. Patrick, half my slide on the bottom. You received your reports at home. You noticed that the very first thing was the level of performance. So again, there are five levels. One is not meeting the expectations, two partially, three approaching, four is really the proficiency, the first level of proficiency where they have met all of the higher standards, and five is exceeding those expectations. So as opposed to our partially proficient, proficient, advanced proficiency, these are the levels that you'll see. So that first number that you saw on the report indicates how, which of these five levels your child fell into. I have to scoot it up there. The ranges, so one is anything below a 700. A 700 to 724 is a two, a 724 to 749 is a three. The 750 goes to the cut score. So for a five, it does vary, and these are the actual cut scores for this year. And each year it is going to change, because this is a normed test, so it does not, it's not like a certain number of points gets you a certain particular score. It's a scale score. It's curved, it's normed based on the whole population who took it. So the actual cut scores are as follows. Ah, what are you doing? There we go. Where'd they go? There we go. If you look under on the left side, I have the cut scores, if you can see that there, for English Language Arts, and on the right for Math. And you can see they vary from being in the eight hundreds and then some in just the upper seven hundreds are a five. So students who receive a score of a five, there is a wide range, all the way up to 850 that they may receive. And even receiving a score of 850 does not mean that the student received a perfect score, meaning every single question was correct. You could miss one or two, and then another student might miss three, and one student might get a perfect score, and then all would come out and norm is an 850. That ranges. So again, it cannot be correlated to percentages. Also on the reports, you will see a line of all of the proficiencies levels and give your students' actual score, so you can place it, where does it fall on the score graph. Below the score graph, it gives you the actual score that your student received, and compare that to the district, if there is more than one school, the state, and then all of the other students that took the PARC. I was just reading today that on, there were 1.2 million students who took the assessment in one day. So that was like their biggest day. So there were a lot of students that took the assessment. Over 600,000 in every grade level took the assessment. And so under that PARC average, that's of those 600,000 students. The score breakdown. Not only are you going to be getting information about the overall score in English Language Arts, you're going to get a breakdown in reading and writing, and then specific skills within those areas. You notice that there are some arrows, and that will indicate how well they're doing compared to that standard. So if you see an arrow downward in the subcategory, it just means that they are below that expectation. If you see two arrows pointing towards each other, it means they met that expectation, and the arrow pointing upward means that they exceeded that expectation. That's been very helpful as the teachers have been starting to meet and really look at the data, to see which particular area specifically that we need to focus on. Is it vocabulary, written expression, literary analysis, so forth? We can see all those breakdowns are where we fall as a district. You can just keep going up. I just want to go ahead and go to the outcomes. I'm not sure why it's... Nope, keep going up. There we go. Okay, for English Language Arts, here are actual scores. So if you can't see them, you might have to look on the website more closely. But it actually breaks out. The first one in the darker blue indicates what our state comparison is, and then our scores are right under it in the white. The far end... I'm not sure why it keeps giving half slides here, Patrick. If you can see right over here, this is the total proficiency. So remember, proficiency is only Level 4 and Level 5 together. So just to give you a quick look as to where we were in Language Arts, the state at third grade was 44 percent. You see those two higher ones? And we were at a 58 for fourth grade, a 51 for the state, and 79 for Denville, a 52 for the state in fifth grade, and a 74 in Denville. So significantly above the state levels. It was about what I expected. I did predict that as a baseline year that we, since we knew that benchmark was about where a three would be, and the benchmark went up to about, well, definitely to a four, that we were going to be in the 60s and 70s. I was pleasantly surprised that in Language Arts, because we've spent so much effort on really getting students to be better readers and better writers, that we saw those scores. Go down to the 63. And then in the comparison for sixth through eighth grade, 49 for the state, 64 for sixth, 52 for the state, 74 for Denville, 52 for the state, and 84 for Denville. So eighth grade Language Arts came in strong. We have been seeing that trend, but I was happy to see that our seventh grade as well. And then we kind of picked out our sixth grade as being an area that we wanted to focus on. Keep scrolling. And for Math, again, the far end, you can see the actual numbers, how they fall. We have a large number of students that are right at that border, at three bumping up to a four. But overall, we're in the, we're 66 for third grade, 60 for fourth grade, and 62 for fifth I broke up six instead of, because eighth grade, we have eighth grade Algebra and Geometry, and they don't all fit on one slide. So for sixth grade, we're at 44 and 48. And so sixth grade was an area, again, that we really want to look at. For Math, keep going. And here's for our eighth grade, and we were really excited about these scores. So for our eighth grade, remember, the eighth grade math, both the state and Denville are lower. For eighth grade, students are broken out into general math, and advanced math, and Algebra I, and geometry. So some of our students are taking all of those courses. So that's probably why you're going to see lower numbers in here. We have a smaller population taking general math in eighth grade. The majority of our students are taking either advanced Algebra I or geometry. And we were very excited to see that 96 percent in comparison to 36 at the state level of our Algebra I students were successfully proficient, and 100 percent of our geometry students as opposed to 23 percent at the state level. So remember that these courses are high school courses, and these are comparison to high school students taking these courses. So those students who have been placed in these and we have identified as being in these programs are, you know, competing with the high schoolers and are doing very, very well. So we're very pleased by that. Here's some resources that I, when we get home, if you want to look at these, really great resources. This is Great Kids Test Guide. It does go over how to read a report, but I really like that if you go on it, you can put your child's grade level on it and the subject area, and it will actually go through the reports. And it says, if your student was low in written expression, here are some things you can do at home to work on it. And it also has, it clicks on, you can even connect to this site called Adapted Mind through that website. An Adapted Mind is basically a practice program that students can practice in PARC-like format, so where they have to drag and draw some of the answers, where they have to highlight comprehension questions. That site is really great for that. These are all great. And then you can also go onto our Denville website, and I think the state puts out, or some great organizations, Great Kids, which actually is a subgroup of great schools, is a really good site. Also, Understanding the Core is another great site as well. I think you have questions?
I have a question. Very much, it's a great presentation. In the very beginning of the presentation, and I think I remember this correctly, but please correct me if I'm wrong, you said that right now we just have our comparison to the state?
Correct.
Did you say, and you will update the presentation when we get comparison to our like or similar districts?
Yes.
Can you just, for everybody, explain how the state determines, it's the state, right, not us, that determines what our like and similar districts are?
And I'm not sure that we're going to receive that particular data.
Oh, okay.
When the data becomes public, we have selected, and Mr. Forte has put together a whole list of schools, and we'll be able to look and see what their scores are and compare them to ours. Just physically go through the state list and compare them. If the state gives us the data by demographic group, it's based on your socioeconomic grouping, so they will look at 23 different economic factors of your community, and then they will rank you from A to J, J being the highest socioeconomic grouping, and Denville is an I. So we would be compared to other I districts around the state.
So we're going back to district factor.
Well, I don't know that they're going to give that to us.
They got rid of it, they gave us something new that made no sense, so this...
For NJAS, they didn't. NJAS, they did give it to us in demographic group, but I don't know that they're going to do that.
Okay, so they may not give us anything. So then, we, through a process last year, Mr. Forte put together a group of districts that are similar to us based on like 10 or 15 factors?
It was size, it was 15, 15 districts based on size, K-8 status, geography, I didn't go past Somerset County, and I didn't, you know, up to Bergen County, and then it also was on demographics.
So that's how we pick our group, that we've been comparing ourselves to on many different things, such as test scores?
Yeah, and once that's published in the individual school district's report card, then we'll go online in each school district's report card and pull out those data points and put it together.
Okay. And then I'll update that. And as soon as we get the, in February, we're supposed to get the subgroups, so we can see like special education and any other subgroup, that's really the only subgroup we have, but we'll get a better idea of how we compare in that, too. And I think that's important, to see how we compare to other school districts more similar to us.
Any other board questions?
Sandy, you, sorry, go ahead. Sandy, you said, I think before, and I think you may have just mentioned it again, that I thought that at some point, three was what was considered like proficient, and then they changed it to four?
It has always been four. However, some states decided to take three, said we are going to accept three. The only concern, I am actually glad that New Jersey did not do that, because it was not normed that way. So when the scores scored all of the assessments, they said these are the ones that are not, they haven't met, totally met the standard. So it's all, if we had said threes were acceptable, it would be saying these students did meet a standard when, in fact, they, according to the scores, did not. So right now, New Jersey stuck to the original scoring, which is four, or a five to be proficient.
So is there a reason why the, and I'm not sure if you would know this or not, but the cut scores are only for five? It seems like if it's an adaptive test, you'd have cut scores for every level, right? Or I guess you're, it's...
There, the cut score is set for every level except the exceeding. So they're, they are just looking at the population to see, in this particular grade level, like because of four, they're saying this is the standard. So you must do this to be a four.
Yep.
But the five, who says what's exceeding? So they look at how well the students do, and then they determine that these are all the students that exceeded, and this was the number that they...
So are they just taking a percentage? I mean, how are they...
It's not a percentage, it actually...
It's a statistical artifact, isn't it?
They, it's basically, they went, I guess it could be a percentage, because it's the top, they're probably looking at the top 4 percent of the bell curve and the night stain eye of kids, I would guess. So yes, I would say it's probably a certain percent.
Gotcha. And thank you for presenting all this. Are you, I'm guessing, obviously, you're pulling some of this data to look at opportunities for improvement, and clearly we did very well, the students did very well in a lot of different subjects, and it shows some of the things that you and the team have initiated to help with those scores, but obviously there's areas for, there's always areas for improvement. So is that, does that come through committee, where you'll sit down and talk about some of the opportunities you've pulled out, as, I mean, you're just getting the data now and trying to dig through it?
Absolutely, but I can tell you, the teachers have already jumped in. The day they got it, they started meeting in their collaborative times and department meetings, and have been really going through individual students, but also looking at, because the way that the rosters were given to us, we can determine, is it vocabulary? Is it written expression? And coming up with plans. In middle, in the middle school, we developed math and language arts plans, short term from now until, since we got them so late, we had a plan from now until this year's assessment, and then really long-term plan, because we, larger changes in curriculum or materials, we couldn't do before that. So we just have to see, are there any small changes that we can make that are going to impact them, to make them more comfortable or more accessible? I would anticipate that everyone in the state will do better just from test familiarity, that once you've done it, and now the teachers have seen it, they know what to expect, it just gives you a better place to be. One of the best things about the PARC that we did not have with NJASK is that they released an entire test. So not only have the teachers been looking at the data, they've been going through each of the released questions to see what are, what standard is this question addressing? How is it addressing? Are we meeting that standard the same way? So I've just seen incredible work with the staff sitting down and really just tearing the tests apart, trying to figure out, not so much about taking the test as much as what was the standard that it was addressing, and are we, are we addressing that the way that we should be?
And I guess some of the longer-term changes are hard to extrapolate out of what ends up being a single point, data point, because we don't have history, and like you said, you don't want to take NJASK and compare. So it's hard to kind of extrapolate, although I guess we could look at a little bit of if that same grade or, you know, something, we can try to get some data points out of it. It's hard to do, I guess, with changes in tests.
It's a hard one, it's a hard one to use it for that this year. I mean, as I've been communicating to the staff and to parents that, at our meeting, really you have to look at it as a baseline. It is the information that we have, and probably the best that we're going to get from this experience is not only going through the experience, but also having the assessment to see, like, we've had this, the Common Core for a few years now. Are we addressing the way that it was anticipated to be addressed? And sometimes the answer was yes, and it's spot on, and sometimes we had, you know, the way that we're teaching a particular thing or the coverage of a certain topic we need to address.
Thank you. Anyone else, Don, did you have?
Yes, yes. We talked, I guess a couple of weeks ago, one of the meetings, we were discussing standardized testing and the, and the math in terms of reading skills, because a lot of, you know, I help out with the homework occasionally now, so I look at these math problems and, you know, it's not your standard math, they're complex problems written out. So any child with a reading disability or reading difficulty is going to struggle completing those questions, especially on a timed test. So have we identified who those kids are, how their scores are, and what would their scores be? Let's just say it's a 100-question math test, and a certain amount of it is all, you know, they're verbal questions, it's written out, written problems. And let's say they get, you know, 74 out of 75 correct, but don't finish the last 25 because they ran out of time.
Many of our students...
To me, they know their math, but they just didn't have enough time to finish it.
The majority of our students, probably all of the students that are identified with having any of those difficulties, have extended time. So they don't, aren't subject to the same time limitations that our general student population is, whether it's through an IEP accommodation or a 504. So some of our general education students who just need additional time, maybe from like an attentional issue or a learning disability, get extended time.
Okay, so they get more time?
Yes.
So when we look at the chart up there, you know, the needs, you know, met expectations or, I forgot all the different categories there. How many of those were in there? I mean, are those kids in those categories?
Any student who took the assessment is included. So yes, some are students, although I can't give you the exact percentage, because we haven't gotten them all yet, but they are in there, and those students, you know, sometimes they are proficient and sometimes not, because it's, you know, it's, could be a learning disability, however, with the accommodations, can access the assessment.
Well, the accommodations, mind, you know, I just wanted, you know, what percent of them that are in that lower category there are kids that are requiring the extra interventions?
Well, it wasn't 100 percent. So some of the students who had ones and twos are identified and some were not, but I will be able to give you our special education comparison numbers.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing that, because, you know, it's, you know, maybe it's not fair to them. Maybe they should be measured differently.
And some students are. There is an alternative assessment, depending on the student disability that...
It's impact, but it's impacting the overall score of the district, so. So, yeah, that was, so, yeah, that was one thing I had on the, and I guess that's just the way it's going to be, that we're going to have, a lot of the math's going to be verbal written out rather than...
It is, it is definitely word problems. They need to be able to, instead of just computation, they need to be able to figure out what to do with the numbers, like to read a word problem and be able to figure out what type of problem that they should put together and then be able to compute. So it's both of those things.
The last thing, you talk about a floating mark there in the, you know, the high category, the exceeds category there?
Yes.
I quite understand why that would float. I mean, all the other, all the other benchmarks are there. Why would that one change?
Well, because the four is the set benchmark. So everyone, to be considered proficient, you must be able to do this amount on the assessment.
I got it.
Like a minimum amount, and that's a four. The, what exceeds is really open to interpretation. It depends on the population of kids, who's exceeding the standard. So it's like Mike was saying, it's a percentage of students who fall into that. Similar to if you were going to compare IQ scores, in a particular place might have a lot of people with high IQ scores, however, there's going, if you put them on a bell curve, there's going to be a top 4 percent. So that's how that last category is looking.
If they're above that score, though, they exceed.
Above a four?
Whether it's one percent of your population or, I think if it's twenty percent, it'd be maybe too easy.
They're taking the entire population who took the park, which was several million students.
Right.
So I think it norms out on a bell curve because there's so many kids taking it. If it were just Denville, you know, then on, and only get, on any given year, you could have more students be in that category.
And who devised the benchmarks, those numbers? Where'd they, where'd they come out of? What?
Cut scores.
High priest or priestess of education?
It was a whole team of priests and priestesses.
Sir Park.
They actually met in March. People were, a whole, people, any teacher could apply, but then all people around, and higher ed, supervisors, et cetera, all over the country applied to, to be on the scoring committee. The first set of people read every single test and then determined what the scoring should be, but didn't score them. So determined, okay, this is where the students fall, one, two, three. And it's not, it is a normed test, so it, it doesn't mean that, okay, the students who miss five problems, you're a one, and kids who miss twenty problems, you're a two. It really was normed on how well did they perform, because there are so many students, they put it on a bell curve, and they determine how, what, how many students should fall into that category. Then they, once they determine those cut scores, in July, that's why we got our test scores back so late this year, was in July, they hired a whole other group of people to come and score them based, be trained and be, and score them based on those standards. So they were scored twice. In the future, now that those scores are determined, we should get them back by the end of the school year.
And, and those are national standards? So whether you go to school in California or Montana or?
Well, it's the twelve states that-
And I see you're sort of state comparison, but those, all the kids in Jersey, New Jersey are being held to the same standards as the rest of the country. Everybody's dealing with those same benchmarks?
The twelve states that took the assessment last year, yes. So we are all on the same benchmark. And then we'll see who joins up or drops out this year. It's on that. Our numbers may change.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cullis.
Absolutely.
You can ask questions, I think, right?
Yeah. Questions on the presentation right now from the public?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
This week.
So every year with the new HIV, harassment, intimidation, and bullying law, the district needs to present this in a public meeting twice per year. First, this will be for the first half of the year, from July 1st through, through December 31st, and then again in July for January 1st through June 30th. So we, the reason it literally is sometimes over summer, too, because we did have two incidents over the summer that are on this. Our first part is the grade from the state on, on our HIV program from 2014-15 is up there. As you see, Lakeview scores seventy-three, River View is seventy-one, and Valley View is sixty-eight, which gives the district a grade of seventy-one. That's out of seventy-five points, well within the range of, of acceptable. So substance abuse and weapons, we had zero cases reported, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We had two confirmed cases and six investigations, which as you notice is a, is a pretty big improvement from last year, where we had somewhere, by this time, we had around twenty investigations and about three cases. So we're, we, the entire district's administrative team and the counselors all went through a half-day training with our attorney on when and when not to start an investigation. So that was one of our areas that we worked to improve in. And I think I've seen some, a lot better numbers on this. We had two incidents of vandalism. They were both reported over the summer. The board members would remember that when it was reported to them. We had one instance of violence, which was reported to you in a closed-session meeting. We had zero suspensions for students with disabilities. Police were notified three times. Police complaint was filed twice. Those were for the two, those were for the two vandalism incidents. In-school suspension, zero. Out-of-school suspension, one. Next page, please. So the district spends a fair, fairly large amount of time and, and resources on trainings and programs that deal with HIV. Staff, student, parent trainings and programs provided, twenty-nine trainings, thirty-six programs. As a matter of fact, all district volunteers now go through an HIV training as well as a DIFIS training, which is child abuse training. So there's, there's training for everybody who comes in contact with the kids. School-wide HIV prevention actions with, there's teaching and learning, student relationships, safety, parental support, physical, emotional environments, morale in the school community. These are all the different areas we work on throughout the year. Again, and then I just put up there again, so everybody can see that we had six investigations and two incidents of confirmed HIV. When there is a confirmed case of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, it's, it's presented to the Board of Education. The Board of Education hears it, approves what the superintendent presents or disapproves. After that, the parents are notified of the outcome of the investigation, whether or not it's been HIV or if it was not HIV. Any questions? This will be on the website under HIV, which is on the homepage, starting tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does the public have any questions of either for, for either presentation? I'll allow that now? Yes, you do.
Patrick, check on that mic.
Hi, Stacy Holden, Cedar Lake, Denver. So I just had three questions on the test scores. My first question was, is there a breakout or will there be a breakout of those, the two elementary schools, so that we can see River View versus?
There, we do break it out.
Right.
We have not in the last few years presented it that way. I want to discuss that with the board first before, to decide after we've already released that. So I don't have quite enough to prepare.
My second question was the math. I noticed that we had four more kids get four problems in LA, which is a new award versus the math. And I was just wondering what that was. I'm a teacher, and so I saw that in other places. And I know there's a vision here, and there's a vision in other schools. I just wondered what that was.
I have some things that I want to do in math specifically to, to increase the frequency of working with those word problems. I have some future professional developments on the horizon, looking with how do you teach, breaking down those word problems, kind of strategies and so forth. I did notice from just my informal conversations with other districts that the language arts was higher than the math, which is unusual. I don't know if it's that a lot of emphasis was put on it, or the way that the scoring was, that they were more forgiving or more accommodating of the written samples. I was pleasantly surprised to get the written samples to see, because it looks as if the standard is, would be so difficult for, let's say, a third grader to attain the literary essay. I was pleasantly surprised and, and happy to see that what was a four was what a third grader could do. It really was a reasonable expectation. So I think that a lot of people were really concerned that it would be scored harder. So I think that they actually were generous with the scoring on the writing.
I haven't heard this. I just thought you might know. Do you know if this, when they released the scores last year, they said that the park will not count for nineteen, twenty-nineteen graduation high school? Have you heard anything about how our eighth graders now moving forward, if it will become? I know that's like out of the realm of this district, but I was just curious if you heard anything, because-
At this point, it would count for them to graduate.
Right.
But they also are discussing that they have to, they have to demonstrate proficiency. So they're discussing whether or not that's the only measure that they can demonstrate proficiency on.
That's what I heard, too. I just didn't know if you heard any more.
Right now, it is, they are, it is going to count. They have to demonstrate proficiency for graduation, for that, for that.
Right. And then I, just as a comment to the board, I don't know if everybody realizes it, but when you take the park, in one classroom, you have multiple tests going on at the same time. So the screens all look different. The kids, not, so when they were taking the ASK, everyone took the same test. When you take the park, all the computer screens are different, and the kids are all taking different questions. There's always a question for me is, how equal are all the questions? I mean, nobody would know that, but when you're taking those tests, they all look different. So it does make it a little bit harder, I think, to, to really measure what's going on. You know, how do I know this story is equally as hard and has the equally difficult vocabulary as this story?
We do have to, we have to look at trends.
Which we can control, but it is just a, a comment that if you've never been in one of the classrooms, when they're giving it, everyone's doing something different, which is crazy, dizzy.
I, I don't understand that. Why?
They have five different versions?
I mean, the-
Seven.
Different versions, NJAS, too.
You know, all the third graders at Lakeview aren't taking, aren't taking the same test?
It's randomized, so each kid has one or seven tests.
Correct.
Different stories, different-
So you may, that is true. I mean, you may have a personal connection to a particular story, whereas your neighbor who would get the same story would not. That, I mean, it could happen with NJASK as well, because I could really love science and my neighbor could not, and I do better because I, I like that. I think the only question I have, and I think it will be remediated this year, was that some students last year had two articles in a video, and some students had three articles. So having that video is really helpful for the student who may not be the strongest of reader to still be able to write about a topic. So I, but I think that will be remediated this year.
It's supposed to be a standardized test. I, I keep it simple for me. I understand why everybody's not taking the same test. They have random questions. How do we know the question's not a little bit more complicated for the third grader in Mrs. Smith's room versus the third grader in Mrs. Jones's room?
I would put forward that even if everybody took the same test, by what you just said, if it happens to be a topic my student or I am familiar with, I will do better with it than the person sitting next to me who's never been exposed to it. So that's by chance also, so.
No, it's not by chance. They're getting the same question. You're right, you're right. If the teacher didn't, if this teacher didn't teach them that, this one did, they might not do well.
Well, I'm saying the stories about baseball, and my son or daughter plays baseball, so they're more familiar with the vernacular and everything else, so they can write on it better than, let's say, my child who only, you know, has never picked up a baseball. So the same test to each student wouldn't be the same anyhow.
It, it would be. It had the same words, the same questions. And if they're familiar with baseball, fine. If they're not, they're more familiar with football, great. But every kid should be, should be getting the same questions on a standardized test. It's not standardized, it's random.
But, Don, I think we've heard these questions with all standardized tests, even across the state.
SATs are the same, depending when you take the SAT, it's different.
I agree with what you're saying. I'm just saying, you could-
Sure.
I don't think you're, I don't, I don't think you're ever going to find a test.
I don't know if anybody realized that.
No, I, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, that was Dylan, he's going to report it out.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, I'm not going to, we're going to change it tonight, but maybe that's why the, we only have twelve states doing this, because maybe somebody asked that question. And to me, it just makes no sense.
But to be fair, all tests have a bias. I mean, regardless of-
Yes, and that's what they try to do with those, the bias of the test.
Unless it's the most generic test you could possibly imagine, there's always going to be somebody who's going to identify with it a little better, I'm sure. Okay.
And, and what's different about, what's different, it is interesting. What's different about Park, that's from NJASK, which we, we have to keep in mind, is that the standards are intended to give students a situation for them to say, okay, what skills have I learned in class to be able to handle any new situation, no matter what it is? It's not, it's, it's more about your stamina and your be able, your ability to attack a situation more than how much you know about a particular topic. Which is, the idea behind it is that that prepared you more for high school, college, and career than memorizing or knowing a lot of, being able to do every multiplication problem or being able to memorize the periodic table. The idea of, I've never seen this problem before, what do I know? Okay? I know how to collect evidence. So even though I've never read this passage, I can read it, and I can collect evidence, and I can pick out a theme. So that, that's the idea. But again, I didn't write it, no one here did, and that topic is out of our hands. We just learn with what we can and, and help our, our students be prepared.
All right. Thank you very much. There are no other questions? We'll get on to superintendent's comments.
The, there is a resolution on here, and there was some discussion about it. There will be some discussion about it today on the roofing project, so I don't think we need to talk about it right now, but we'll get to it. I just wanted to bring that up in case there wasn't time to talk about it. Next thing is something that, that Dr. Cullis, myself, and the two, and the principal and vice principal at, at Valley View worked on was having short, ten-minute scheduling conferences with every student in eighth grade, so that the parents are aware of what the offerings are in the, in the high school. We've never done it before, at least not in the last few years. I've never heard of somebody said that they did it before. So they started today. The parents come in. It's, it's more like a what you see in a, in a K-12, you almost always see this, because the, the ninth-grade guidance counselors will come down to wherever the middle school kids are and do this. Our district, since we don't have that, our, our guidance counselors were trained by the MHRD guidance counselors to have these meetings. So now the parents sit with the, with the parent, I mean, the parents sit with the guidance counselor and their student. They have the course selections. They get to talk about, if I take this class, how does, what does that do? How does that impact my son or daughter in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade? And I, I think it's going to be a positive thing for us. I think one of the things that we've been doing is this data share with them. And Dr. Cullis found that we had, in some cases, up to twenty percent of our students going into the CPB level. And the CPB level is the lowest level. So we, we wanted to look at that and say, well, one out of every five kids going to that seems very high to us. So we put in place a couple of these things. One of them is the, are these meetings. Second thing is the principal's involvement in this, where he'll have to sign off on anybody getting placed into a CPB level course, just so that everybody's aware. And we're hoping that this is going to make it, make the situation better. One of the reasons this even came up was because my own daughter, I guess I was asleep at the switch, and I, and I let her take a class that she shouldn't have taken. And, and I'm involved in this. So I was thinking, like, if I do that, and I'm involved in it, and I was a high school principal before, and know about the things that are going on in the high school, it's going to be difficult for people who don't have that experience. So hopefully this going forward will be a positive thing, and we're looking forward to it. Eighth, right? Did you have yours?
Uh, we, Thursday.
Okay, good. So I saw, I talked to a couple of parents today about it, and they were very happy, and they thought it was a great thing that they're getting this chance to sit there for ten minutes. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Cullis, it's back to you.
Similarly, we are going to be having these conferences with fifth-grade parents this year, because we have so many new offerings at the middle school. There are a lot of questions that have come up over the summer, and with placement, and whether or not that was where they thought their student should go, or why they're being placed in a certain level. So we will be having those at the end of the year for fifth-grade parents. Along with our data analysis, we're working with the high school and just out of curiosity and, and just kind of keeping up with where our, our students are going when they get to high school, just an update of students that are applying to programs and that are accepted. So we know that there's the IB program, there's also the Math and Science Magnet, to give you some ideas of numbers. In 2014, for the IB, we had fourteen students. In 2015, we had fifteen students accepted, and this year we have twenty-one. So that's going up. And that's another, another piece of evidence or data to look at, another point, because again, things like Park, that's just one piece to look at of readiness. The Magnet program, we had twelve students in 2014, fourteen in 2015, and twelve this year.
Can you explain those programs?
In a few moments.
At least tell me what IB stands for?
International Baccalaureate. So it is a very rigorous program that has advanced coursework, coursework. It is not AP, they are not AP classes. So they are not, they are definitely college-level programs, but it is not the same as taking the AP class and then taking a test. The whole entire, you are in that program for two years, your junior and senior year.
And as the name states, it is actually internationally recognized.
This is the European, right, this particular, yeah, diploma is a, is the European model. And it is well-accepted as a prestigious thing in, for major universities to graduate with this diploma. The Magnet is a specific focus. You still have to take the same number of courses to graduate, same requirements, but it's a math and science focus. So some of our students that are taking like the biology or the advanced math are, are interested in going to that Magnet, so we're knocking off some of the prerequisites, because this program has some of the higher levels of math and science.
And both of those programs are open to any student that live in descending districts in high school. So you have to be a Denville, Rockaway Township, Rockaway Borough, and the Fort Worth student. So, and to that end, we don't collect data on the, what are they called, the academies of Mars County?
We can. I mean, this was just, I'm always looking for points to collect, again, because I don't want to put all of our eggs in one basket, thinking of one standardized test or one assessment. I want to look at, are we really preparing our students by looking at a multitude of things? Where, what, last year, we took, you know, we analyzed the data to see what course and what grade did they get all the way through, freshmen through seniors that went through dental schools, to see where, how are we doing up there? And, you know, we were pleasantly surprised, and I shouldn't say surprised, we were very happy with the data, surprised with the data, that our students were really getting As and Bs and excelling at the high school. This concludes this, this is superintendent's report.
Thank you very much.
I won't talk anymore.
Any business administrator comments?
Yes, I do. I am happy to announce that we finally received the national provider, identification number for the semi-program. Sorry.
Thanks.
Ah.
Sorry. We finally received the semi-national provider number to be able to participate in the, in the special education Medicaid Initiative program, starting in January. They will be training us via webinar on how to use the system, the program, and how to input all the information in the system. This will allow the district to, to partially request reimbursement for medically-related services such as evaluation, speech, transportation, occupational therapists, physical therapy, specialized transportation. It will be a great source of revenue for the district coming this year. Granted that we are halfway through the school year, but we will be able to participate at least for the remaining of this year.
Thank you. That's a state or a federal program?
That is a state program.
Okay.
The other topic that I would like to discuss is the lunch program. I have been in communication with the different PTAs from, from the different schools. In tonight's agenda, we have as an action item to approve the, the cost to provide free lunches to the qualified free meal students. It will be a cost to the district, however, it will be partially funded through the Title I Part A federally. And also, we have other, Steve has been working with the town to donate some funds to be able to supplement the cost. We are thinking of keeping it the same for the remaining of the school year, in the same manner that the PTA has been ordering the lunches, ordering through the same vendors, and offering those students the free lunches. We might be sending a letter to the parents and advising them and having them give us a consent. They are in agreement, just so we can all be on the same page. Other than that, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, 8:16, I will open up for public discussion on agenda items. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I will close at, it is now switched over to 8:17, and close the public portion. Okay. And we will now go on to old business. Mr. Luer, would you care to take us through the old business items that we'll be voting on at the next meeting?
Certainly. I would like to move-
At our next meeting.
Sorry. We have three sections. We have, like to, we will be reviewing the, sorry, we'll be approving the reports from December, the treasurer of school monies and the board secretary, and the education reports, enrollment, medical office, HIV, application for QSAC equivalency for three years, and the HIV EUDVRS report from July 1st through December 31st, which was just presented, and approving the minutes for the work session, regular meeting, and executive session of December 14th of last year.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business. Mr. Cass, would you like to- Mr. Cass, would you like to move us through personnel?
These are action items too.
And these are action, and these are items to be, action to be taken tonight?
Yeah, okay. On the personnel-
Yep.
I turn the, uh, page here. We're gonna, uh, um, report the motion to, uh, approve, uh, filing resignation, retirement, salary adjustments, et cetera, pending approval from the State Department of Education, and including, uh, criminal background checks being completed on these people.
Any questions? Discussion?
The only guy has, um, I'm, I'm sorry to see it's, it's out here plugged, but, uh, you know, Jerry, Jerry, our maintenance specialist is gonna be out of, we have coverage for while he's, he's gonna be gone? I mean, it was-
Yeah, me. Pretty much.
You're gonna bring extra change of clothes to, uh-
I mean, I'm-
It's gonna say Steve on the, uh-
I'm working with the vendors and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, okay, we got some-
I'm helped, but I, my two, the two guys that we have that are, that are working with us are great, and they're, they're picking up the slack, and, and the things that need to be done with vendors and such, I've been picking up the slack with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Addison?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes. Moving on to finance, uh, Mrs. Deluna, would you care to move us through finance?
Yes, since there's only two, I think I'd like to move them individually so we can have discussion. Do you wanna do the free lunch, or the, uh-
I'm gonna start with number one. I'm gonna start with-
Number one. So, the motion is be resolved, the board of it, then we'll ta, approve cap reserve withdrawal not to exceed 1.2 million to assist in funding for the roof replacement at Lakeview Elementary and Valley View, including the contract with the Carol Rubino for architectural engineering work for professional services request of 86/4 with reimbursable expenses of $5,000.
I'll second.
Cass seconds. Discussion?
Yeah, like, I'm concerned, this is, all right, maybe I need some background on how we reaccrue cap reserve. This is, um, double the largest withdrawal I can recall, but I feel like we were aiming for around 600 to, so it replenishes annually. I feel like this, you know, to take the entire amount out of cap reserve makes me hesitate.
Well, this is, this is because we've all agreed that this thing needs to be done, so we have to move past that, whether or not we agree it needs to be done. Our experts have said that our roof, these two roofing sections, they're large sections of River, of Lakeview and Valley View are failed. So, assuming that they need to be done, and we all agree with that, this is to get started on the process. We, we can change the funding of it later. Obviously, we can't, we can't say that we're gonna use next year's money, because we haven't built our budget, but we can use this, we can fund it with this cap reserve right now. Only part, some of this money is gonna come out of the, of the, it's gonna need to be spent before July 1st anyway. So during the budget process, we can look at financing some of these chunks of the roof. For example, on a $1.2 million project, it's about, and it's not exact, but about 700,000 Lakeview, 500,000 Valleyview. We could finance the 500,000 over five years for approximately $120,000, say, but we have to remember that that goes towards our, our cap. So the budget, that's gonna go in the cap number. That's why we probably wouldn't want to finance the whole thing, because it's gonna be a big percentage of your, of your budget, of your budget increase.
A 2% cap.
So this is to get started on it, so we can go out to bid and have the engineers start working on this and actually start drawing out the plans and doing all that, and then putting it out to bid. And the reason why we bring this up is due to the fact that both our consultant and our engineers have said, it's actually an architect, not an engineer, our architect and our consultant both said, if you get out with this thing a little earlier than later, before the contractors book up their work for the summer, we'll end up getting a better price. Meaning, right now, it's around $25 a square foot. He said it could be as much as a $5 swing. That's, that's a fairly decent amount, uh, difference. So I, that's why I put it out to you, to, to get the ball rolling before, uh, before it gets too late to get those, the advantageous pricing. And also, we want to hit the ground running on, you know, Ju, June 22nd, so that we get the project started.
So for me, um, I will take our experts that were paying to advise us and say that the roofs need to get done, so that's the first question we posed. I will say, in committee when we discuss this, I sided with Mrs. Deluna. I don't feel comfortable pulling this much money out of capital reserve when I know what we had to do to claw and scrape to get the money in there. That being said, as you presented it to us at the last meeting, and what you just represented right now, about getting in front of it and still be able to look at it in the budget and hopefully come back closer to that number we discussed in committee for only pulling more like $600,000 out of capital reserves, financing the rest another way, I would be willing to vote in favor of this with this wording, knowing that we're still gonna look to get closer to that number when we put together the budget. I don't wanna miss the opportunity. I've been on the board too long, I know that if you don't get in front of it, and you wait till after your budget is passed, you might not get all your projects done for the summer. So I'm willing to, you know, vote in favor of saying we're pulling out this much money with the thought that we really won't-
We look, yeah, and-
I mean, I won't support a budget that does that.
We, and we have a, we'll have approximately $800,000 remaining in reserves, in our two different reserves. And it does, we don't, we don't put back, we're not gonna put back 800,000, there's no way we're gonna do that. We're gonna put in, you know, maybe we're gonna put in, uh, 200,000 or 300,000 into reserves, somewhere along those lines. So it does take time to build the money back. Problem is, another, I think is an important point is, when you know there's a problem and you agree that there's a problem, meaning the roof is failed, and you have this money, I think you have to get out in front of it and get it going. If you don't, the, the $1.2 million might turn out to be 2.2 million dollars by the time you have to deal with all the-
If our walls start being compromised because the roofs are compromised, then that's just foolish, which is-
And remember, there's 20% soft costs in there, which means that's for unforeseen circumstances, like they open up one of the walls and there is rot, and it's also for the eight and a half percent in architectural fees. So, so we do have some cushioning in there, and, and hopefully the number won't be 1.2, hopefully it'll be a million dollars, and, and we'll get the work done for a million dollars. Remember, we're also, this, this number was gonna be a lot higher because we were supposed to replace another roof at Lakeview, but we have pushed hard, and the, the, uh, the warranty company is covering some of that work to, to help prolong the life of that section of roof at Lakeview. So that, that number came off, it was around 250,000 more. But, that roof is gonna have to be replaced in four or five more years, but at least we bought four or five more years out of it. I'm, I'm not crazy about taking out 1.2 million either. I don't want anybody to think that. I mean, I love the fact that we have 2, 2.1 million in reserves, and it's a great thing. It's just that, you know, I have this report here, and I think we're at the point where we need to do something with it.
And the flip, and the flip side of that is, that money sitting in that account is great, but if we're not using it for stuff like this, then what is the value of it?
This is exactly what it's for.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, let me ask an ignorant question. Um, we, we're kind of, we're saying that we're gonna withdraw 1.2 million, but you're saying we don't necessarily have to do that because the job's not gonna have, be completed.
Right.
So-
You're approving the, you're approving the spending of this month.
So we have to approve the entire spending of the money, even if later on we decide that half of it's gonna come from somewhere else.
The reason why you have to do that now is because, first of all, our architect won't work with us until they know that you're really serious you're gonna do this, because they're gonna start accruing expenses. Second thing is, we need to go to bid, and that, that bidding process, hopefully, if we get out in front of it, will be before the budget process is finalized. Maybe, maybe 25% done the budget process, so we can have some discussion with it, but, um, if, if, in other words, if we don't, if we don't approve this expenditure now, we can't go to bid.
So, so if we didn't have this money, if we didn't have a reserve, we would basically have to wait, we, we couldn't do anything as far as going out to bid until we actually could show that we had the money in hand to be able to pay for this. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, you probably, we probably would prioritize even more. In other words, we have these failing sections, comes out to 1.2 million dollars. We'd probably have to prioritize even more and say, what's the failing, failing, failing section? Meaning like, it's raining. Let's do the raining one now and the drizzling one later. Like, that, that's probably what we'd have to do, and pick maybe 300,000 worth of roofs and put them in the budget, and then do another 300. The problem with doing it that way, obviously, is, I've already told you guys, in, in, in another four or five years, we're looking at another $2 million in roofing sections ready to be replaced.
And the way to do the roofs and the sections, other than the Riverview one that I think we did-
The whole roof.
Almost entirely, right?
Yeah.
But in our time on the board, that's we keep doing sections, whichever one's next in the line.
And that's good. That's a great thing, actually.
Then you don't have all the money hitting you all at once.
Right. Yeah. This is the only way you can do it cyclically. I mean, if you had, like, if you had this, the entire roof at Lakeview, it could be $4 million, you know, then you're never gonna have $4 million. So this is actually a good way of doing it. It sounds weird, because on your house, you wouldn't just replace like one piece of your roof, but on a building, especially a building like Lakeview that was grown, right? It basically grew, it's a piece, and then another piece. All you're doing is replacing those pieces.
From a procedural standpoint, if we approve this resolution, and then we decide to change the funding, we'd have to go back and pull back this resolution and, and create a new resolution, correct?
Yeah, I mean-
But I mean, but to get started, you have to have a resolution to be able to say, with confidence, we're gonna go to bid, oh-
Yeah.
Not with confidence, to go to bid at all-
Right.
Or to go to the architect and say, hey, we're ready to go. So this gives you, you the ability to say, hey, we're ready to go, we can always change the funding, but we just procedurally have to change this resolution or redact this resolution and then-
Yep.
Get a new one, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we'll work out the details with the auditor on how he wants us to-
Yeah.
Change it once we decide to do it.
To piggyback on where he's saying, you're gonna get the best bang for the buck, uh, the scope, you don't want scope creep. So what we could do if we didn't do it this way is do it over two years, but your square footage cost will be more because it's not as desirable.
Right.
So he, he is right in saying, we learned from Riverview that we waited and waited and, and didn't get done on time, and even if you have the clauses in the contract with penalties-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So he's right to get in there when there's still a good field of people. I'm just nervous, it's more than we've ever chewed in one school budget cycle, but I think with the sale of the house, with the reevaluation, if, if the hospital brings in a windfall, like, if the ratables are favorable for a change, you know, like, it, it won't have to come down to this, but, like, to your point in committee, where we have low debt, and it's been, it's significantly lower than when we started, and I'm not, I'm a pay-as-you-go kind of family, but as far as the, keeping it under cap and reasonable for the taxes, it might make sense to look at partial debt service on this, so.
This would be, uh, this would be like-
You need some study, some break even, because you don't have any quotes yet, it's, it's, you know, you don't know yet.
I just wanna make sure it's not, it won't be debt service, it's different.
Like the lease-
Right, it'll be, it's a leasing thing, yeah.
Five-year.
But it's part of our budget, it's not outside the budget like, like debt services. That's why I wanna just make that distinction.
It's different, so these purchases where we borrow money from the bank and we have to pay an interest rate, um, but again, we'll be eating up budget funding for future years, for the next five years.
Right.
And you do keep the roof when the lease is over, just so everybody knows.
Yes.
After five years, they don't go up and take it down.
Is that where we get a favorable, like, a 40%?
That's debt service.
The debt service.
Debt service is a safe, uh-
If you, if you, if you fund things through a referendum, through a town-wide referendum, if you fund capital projects through a town-wide referendum, you get what's called debt service from the state, which is 40% of your yearly debt payment.
That's only through referendum?
Only through referendum. When there was rod grants, which this district took advantage of, not to the extent we could have if we weren't for a referendum, but at that particular time, there aren't any rod grants now, just make sure everybody knows, there was a billion dollars approximately, and they're all gone, and it was 40% upfront, so meaning, if you did a $10 million project and you got a referendum, you're really only going to your taxpayers for 6 million. The state gave you the 4 million. This way, you're actually going for the full 10 million, but every payment year, if you're paying off $100,000 a year, you're paying 60, and the state's giving you 40. That's how the debt service works. But the important distinction is, the only debt that's outside of your cap is debt service like that, that's through a referendum. This money, if we choose to finance it, will be, will go towards that 2% cap. And the, the simple explanation is, if you have a $500,000 tax, uh, I mean, uh, cap increase, meaning your budget's 2%, and you're gonna go up 500,000, and you say 125,000 of it is going towards this lease, that's for the next five years, you have to be wary that that money comes off, meaning your cap now is not 500, it's 375. So it's just something to be wary of, and, and I agree that we should do it creatively with both, with some of each, because you know, on that other, that list I've given you, there's other projects on there, and it's really hard to decide which ones aren't gonna get done, because they're, they're pretty much needed projects.
This is the lion's share, and then some.
Exactly.
Question. I, I think everybody agrees that if the roof is leaking, it needs to be fixed. My question is, I, I don't, that's not really a question, I don't really understand why we need to vote to pull all of the money out now. I, this, is, do the, do the contractors and the architects require that we have all of the money on hand before they're willing to work with us at all? I mean, they, they have to, the people we're dealing with have to know that we're a school district and we, that our budget process is inconveniently placed for this kind of work. They, I mean, they, they have to understand that we can go back and pull out more if we need to, or they also have to understand that we're going to have some of it in our, in our budget. There's, there seems to be significant nervousness about pulling this much out right now. Why can't we pull out half of it, say? That's the number out of, out of the air. Why can't we pull out half of it now, and as, as Mike was saying, revisit it later if we need to pull out either more or less?
We don't actually have to fund it right now.
I say, we're not literally-
Like, we're not, we're not actually taking money out. The problem is, yeah, basically, if you're a contractor, you're, you're an architect, this is basically them saying, you saying to them, we are committed to this project for 1.2 million dollars. They don't care how we pay for it. They just wanna know that you have the money available. They, they won't do anything until they see a certified resolution passing this thing tomorrow. They, they won't work on it at all. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of work for them to start, you know, all the process that's involved in this. And then, and then once you go out to bid, the bid is gonna say, this, you know, this scope of work, our architects are saying that, that this scope of work is gonna cost 1, 2, 0.2 million dollars. So the bids are gonna come back in. If it comes in at 100, at a million dollars, great, but there, nobody's gonna go out and, and, and bid on a job if there's no funding behind the job. That, that's basically where it comes from.
No expression that we wanna do it.
Right.
That's what the resolution is.
And it has to be the full amount, because at the end of the day, if they come back with a bid, they're not gonna, they need a resolution for the full amount, right? So, and I think the other thing too is, is just to be clear, we're very doubtful that there's much variation in what's gonna come back on bid, right? I mean, a, a roof is a roof, and $25 a square foot-
No, no, don't say that. We've seen it in both ways, like, really under, like, hungry, and then really over.
We're trying to get the hungry guys now. That's the point of it.
If I remember in Riverview bids, I think the lowest was like 800, and the top one was like 1.4 million.
Yeah, there's a big swing. Yeah, there's a big swing.
Yeah, but we've already, our, our architects know that. I mean, it's not gonna be a 50% difference. They're not gonna get a bid coming in half the amount. Yes, but you're gonna have bids way over 1.2. You're not gonna have bids coming in at 600, is all I'm saying, is that we're not gonna have a 50%-
Yeah, but history, your history's shown, I mean, you had architects that have given you one number, and you guys have come out with very, very different numbers on other projects.
It depends on how hungry they are. If they're not hungry, they can be way above this, and if they are, you can get a-
I guess my point is, is that roofs are much different than other types of projects, too.
There's also change orders.
Sure.
Meaning they come in, and they open up the wall, and, oh my god.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so, there's a lot of, there's a lot, that's why, that's why the number is the number, it is. Because nobody wants to give you, if they come to us and say, Steve, budget for 800 grand, you know, and then the project costs 1.2 million, and we're sitting there going, we don't have the other 400,000.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Then we got a new architect, and hopefully they'll be there.
Yeah, exactly. That's why.
Okay, if, anything else?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate what I said a couple of meetings, and we were talking about the, the roofs, that it's, it's really great that our administrators have gotten this on the front burner, and are, are moving it forward. Because I've, you know, been on the building grounds for a, a long time, and in the past, we just got these projects teed up too late, and we really paid for it in terms of delays, and get, you know, it started late, and it ran into the school year, it was just an absolute disaster. So, a big project like this, gotta be finely tuned, uh, you know, you gotta, you gotta get it moving, and now's the right time. Because once you get into the spring, all the school districts are doing projects, it's difficult to get things done. Especially the small projects, where there's less money for every, for everybody. Uh, I also, um, in the beginning of joining the school board, spent a lot of time walking through the schools. And I was at River View, um, during a rainstorm one day, and, you know, you talk about roofs are roof, but when these roofs leak, it's extremely disruptive to the everyday activities in the school. They got bucket, you got, you know, staff going around with the buckets to get the water, people mopping up the floor. So, instead of educating the kids, or doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're, they're cleaning up a, a mess. And then there's the tremendous damage to the, to the building, to the infrastructure, when the roofs leak. We've had a lot of damage to the schools, and it's hidden for a while, and then all of a sudden, you, you see it. Like, when we redid the, uh, the windows at River View, the lintels were all, were all rusted and, and rotten and everything. So, we're really glad to get these roofs shaped up, and I think we're doing it in a, you know, with some, some prudence with the fiscal management of it. But it's, it's gotta get done, and I'm glad to see we're, we're pushing it forward, you know, on a, on a timely schedule.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
One other thing. So, if I understand what you're telling me correctly, the reason where we have to do it, we have to make the resolution for the entire amount is because we don't believe that anybody is going to bid on it if we don't say, hey, we have the money, you will get paid. Is that, is that correct?
I mean, yeah, our architect won't work on it at all if we don't even get started. We have to approve his proposal, that proposal that I shared with you guys.
And I think more importantly, that the seven of us, whatever the number is, agree that this is something we wanna do. It's not just two or three of us telling Steve to just go ahead and get bids.
Right. Does it make sense, Steve?
Okay. All right, uh, I'm gonna call for roll call on number one, then.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to move item number 2 under finance. Be resolved by the Board of Ed of the Council of Denville, approved to provide free lunch to economically disadvantaged students for the remainder of the 2015-16 school year, partially funded through the No Child Left Behind Title I Part A grant in the amount of $8,344.
I'll second.
Mike?
Sorry. I have a question on this one. So, I read the, uh, excuse me, the notes that you put in, in the weekly.
Yeah.
The one thing I, I know you're gonna invite basically through the PTA, and we're gonna get some funding-
Through, right through the vendors, directly to the vendors, not through the PTA.
And that's, well, most of my questions are gonna be, is, are we going to be paying the PTA, who's then in turn buying, or we're buying it right through them?
We will be buying through the vendor and paying directly to the vendor. We cannot pay the PTA directly, because that will be a conflict of interest.
But it'll still get delivered with all the other lunch chains.
Correct. The PTA was gonna, it's going to assist us in placing the order, bringing the order up, and setting it up in, in the lunch chains. And even telling us exactly how much it's gonna cost us, uh, because-
Because it's coming essentially at cost, not that the, and other PTAs, obviously, either the fundraisers, they're not making money off this part of it, right?
We'll be paying the vendor's costs, not the PTA costs.
So, that's the one part, and then, I think, uh, you gotta give a big pat on the back to the town for coming to the back for, from the social services, that's a really big deal. I think it's, uh, part of the commitment to shared services that we've seen so far.
Yeah, right, it's great.
So, I have a question. When we spoke about this at the last meeting, before you guys nailed it down to this plan, Steve, I think you spoke about the fact that if it was federally funded, we had to go with a certain type of vendor. You just said that the Title I Part A grant is a federal grant.
No, that's if we went with the, with the free and reduced lunch program, like, the state free and reduced lunch program, that's a little different. This is funds that we have, that, that can only be used, they're, they're called, what, what's that you? Neglected children, child, neglected child funds, can only be used for certain things. This is one of those things that you can use it for.
Okay, so, but, we're not using funds that can only be the other way, so this, uh, this isn't setting next year in stone, but for this year, we can use these funds and continue going through the PTA.
It's gonna get us through this year. We don't know if this is gonna be sustainable. We don't know if this is gonna be something, we have to look at it. We have to decide whether or not we wanna go into, to the free and reduced lunch program, which will have a big expense on our end. Upfront costs will be high, because we'll need, you, you know, you're, now you're no longer talking about 80 lunches, you're talking about, could be 400 or 500 lunches a day. So, getting the lunches from the vendor, which would be, say, Morris Knowles, if we, if we went into, in cooperation with them, you know, you'd need a van, truck, a driver, all that.
I know I, one, don't have an interest in doing that on many levels, okay.
There's a lot of stuff with that.
One question I have is to point at Title I. I thought we were always told that Title I funds were given per school, and then you can only use those particular Title I's. This is the way I understood it, to that school. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure that something is wrong, because I, I trust what we're doing. But is that, is that the case, is that not the case?
No, that's not, that's not the case. Title I is funded for the district.
Okay.
It must be a different one, because I know what you're saying, I've heard that.
It depends on which part it is.
There are school funds that are just, for, just specifically for Title I. The neglected funds, the only reason we even receive them is because we have, um, the orphanage, and they count how many, they determine how many students would be homeless or neglected, foster care, so on, in your township. So, it does not matter that those students are not currently going to Denville schools or not. It does not matter. It doesn't go to those, but it's different.
Yeah, and-
They give it to you with the intent that there may be students that come to your district that need it.
I always thought, I guess we're thinking the same thing, I always thought it was something-
Title I itself is tied to the school, so there's other Title I money that's not neglected, that we specifically have to use only at Lakeview.
And that's like when we put in those programs around-
Like, the Success Academy is funded through that.
Those are the ones that we could only run in-
After-school tutoring.
And there were some times where we should have taken the Title I's, because it cost us too much money to pay for it.
Yeah.
Well, we did that with Title III, because it was like, a couple hundred dollars, and the amount of work. And then, because the private schools did not accept their money, we ended up getting, like, $11,000 of their money back. So, and it made it worth it, because we had $11,000.
I've got a couple of questions. Number one, this neglected fund, or whatever, the Title I neglected, did we use it last year?
Do you remember?
We did use it, but it was not for food services. We used it for, um, supplies, books, backpacks, anything like that that came up that students-
So, personal student needs, not school-wide needs?
But this neglected is going to personal students, like, the certain number of students that are identified. It is going to them.
Okay. And then, um, two more questions. Is this only for the students that qualify for free lunch, or is this the students that qualify for free and reduced lunch?
Right now, we're only offering to the students that qualify for free lunches.
And what's that number?
Uh, we have approximately 78.
78.
Do we know how many qualify for reduced lunch that might be getting help from the PTA right now, or are they?
This is gonna cover all the kids getting help from the PTA.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then, the final question is, is this five days a week, or is it in accordance with, okay, so it's not in accordance with what each individual PTA was doing previously, it's five days a week?
Yeah, we had to break out a little bit. We had to push it a little bit. And the River View one's the easiest, because they have a vendor, we're just working directly with the same vendor every time. But, yeah, we, we told them we wouldn't be interested unless it was five days a week-
Okay, great.
For the remainder of the school year. Start, it'll start July, I mean, it'll start February 1st.
Okay.
We're looking to approve it today, because we wanna get the letters out to the parents, and have a little bit of time to get started on this, and then, uh, start February 1st.
Okay.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Forte, for looking into this, and Damaris, and everybody else in the administration that was involved. This is something that, uh, was brought up to, I know, me and Mrs. Lindsey at a PTA meeting, and I didn't know it was going on, and how it was being funded, and I felt it was important, and I think the board felt it was important to, to kinda figure out a way to, uh, to fund it differently, and, uh, I appreciate you looking into it, I appreciate you getting creative and talking to the town, appreciate the town's support in it, so, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to my attention, I'll be honest with you, I didn't realize the extent of it.
I would, that would be mine, too. I mean, I had heard, I had no idea the scope of how many people the PTAs were helping. I knew that they did, but I thought it was picking up three or four families, I had no idea the scope of it. So, I'm glad that they came to us, I'm glad that we were able to do this. It's wonderful.
I raised the, uh, some questions at the, when we first discussed this, I think we discussed it a couple of times. And obviously, it's gonna cost a lot, a lot more money if we do it, the next go-around in the budgets. Have we drilled down and, and gotten answers to some of the issues? Because, you know, we're taking care of lunch, it might, my concern, that we discussed some of the variables. Are these kids getting breakfast? Are they getting dinner? We had the embarrassment factor, so are they gonna take the free lunch? Because they're too embarrassed, you know, and we had kids staying home because they didn't have lunch. And it's, to me, this is like, you know, a Band-Aid when sutures are, are needed. It might be a bigger problem, and, and who's addressing that? You know, to find out what the, the causation is, well, especially with all the safety nets we have in, in America. I mean, nobody should go hungry. I wanna help these kids out, but, to me, you know, there's, to me, I don't have enough answers to make a decision. Throw some money at it, they're gonna get a lunch, but what about breakfast, what about dinner? What about staying home, because they're too embarrassed to, to come in and get a free lunch?
So-
That we are, how are we gonna resolve, resolve those issues? Who's gonna resolve it? And, uh, and try to fix the problem.
Well, so that sort of dovetails with the question I was gonna ask, which is, I think I've heard you say, Damaris, that we're going to send letters after, if this gets approved, we'll send letters home to all the parents of students involved. So, at the last meeting, we talked about having somebody reach out and talk to them to see if they'd be willing to do this. So, that step hasn't happened yet?
Well, uh, no, because we were trying to approve this.
We're waiting for this.
Yes, and we were rescinding a consent form.
We also, what happened was-
It's all gonna be a letter, there will be no conversation, because when Don brought this up the last time, you know, I thought in the conversation, you can get it some of the time.
Here's, here's what happened. After that meeting, we all, we started thinking about this, there was gonna be a stigma attached if, uh, you know, you get a slice of pizza and somebody gets a little thing like, uh, right.
I'm really glad that it's just-
So, now that we, now that we stopped the stigma, we didn't feel the need to have to go to everybody and see if they would accept this lunch. We're gonna do it through a letter. But I'll tell you, one of the things that's, that's the difference is, and you have to maybe visualize it, if, if you're, if, if 100 lunches come in, right, and 100 of them are paid for, or 80 of them are paid for and 20 of them aren't, no one's gonna know. Because it's gonna be like the same thing from that Sunrise Cafe, a little tin, and this kid's gonna get the same tin. So, it's not gonna be a stigma attached to it. But what we did do is, I reached out to the social services person, he, they did, they did, um, tell me they would give us $5,000 towards this program, and they also gave me all of his contact information. So, in the letter, it's, there's a, there's a whole thing about, if, if there's other services needed, we're, we're giving him, we're giving them all the contact information for that, for that, uh, social services department. And, and our counselors are all aware of it, we did a conference call with the counselors. The counselors know that in any case where there's, the paper doesn't come back, or you're not sure that the person understands it, that they're gonna reach out directly to them to, to, to make that connection with the school.
Now, but outside the lunch program, I mean, our counselors will, can, can and will refer people to social services if, if they feel it's necessary. I mean, we have a procedure for that, obviously, and that would happen under normal circumstances, is that true?
Sure.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, I think we can only do what we can do. If we're gonna hand somebody off to social services, again, I think that would happen anyway.
Well, I was gonna say, now we could be concerned about this, but, I mean, it sounds like, from what Dr. Hulse said, these funds were previously used for books and backpacks and things, somebody identified that before. Now, obviously, we won't have the funds to do both. Right. But, somebody was making these identifications before, so I would hope that that same process would still be being applied. Which should catch those type of things, but people may not feel comfortable discussing their personal finances and situations with the school.
Yeah, but, you know, I don't, I don't wanna sound harmless, but it's, some people just, you know, they got the food in the house, they're just too lazy to make lunch for the kid.
I think to be honest with you, for free and reduced lunches, you need to have a certain-
It's not about, yeah.
Economic threshold.
Yes, it's an economic-
It's a pretty low threshold, too.
It's pretty low. It's not a circumstance where someone's lazy to make lunch. So, they all have, they don't have free lunch? They don't make any money. They're either unemployed or under, uh, in poverty. They don't have the ability to feed their kids.
Yeah, it's a, Dr. Hulse said, it's a financial cutoff.
Remember, too, we, we do bring in a substantial amount of money through that homelessness funds, and these are the same kids. So, even though this is, even though this is, you know, a state, there's a cost to it, there are, there are substantial, there's substantial funds coming in, even though it only funds their, their education for one year, and we keep them longer, but it's still money that we wouldn't have had. And these are the same kids that are gonna benefit from that. And you're right, Don, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd be able to do a lot more, you know, 24/7. I think, and maybe, maybe this is a Band-Aid, if that's the way you call it, but I think it's a huge first step, that the board is recognizing a problem, that the kids aren't eating lunch, that the PTAs are subsidizing it, and we're gonna come up with some funds that we have that can't be applied to other things, and use it for the, the good of these kids, plus all the other funds we're bringing in, too.
One thing I would say is that if, if there are things that we're not providing, that we're able to provide in the past, because we're taking that $8,300 or however much it was last year, I would encourage us to kinda look to either the community or the parents to offer assistance. I know we can't obviously offer it directly, but if they said, hey, these, we need 20 brand-new backpacks for kids that need them, I guarantee you'd have 40 outside that door, you know, if you said it. Because I think parents in this town seem to step up. So, if it's needed, if those kids need stuff like that, I would suggest that we come and just reach out, and maybe even, we're assisting the PTA with this in, in one way, shape, or form. Maybe we can use that as, as a, as a link, and have the PTA kinda reach out to parents and use them to kinda help them if they, if they need stuff. So, that's the only thing I would say.
I have a meeting with the PTA presidents on Friday, these are all the discussions I'm gonna have with them about. You know, they're, they're funding it currently, so if we, if we reduce that financial burden from them, there should be some other areas that they have, maybe, maybe if there is another need that comes up-
Sure.
That we can't fund, maybe we can feel okay asking them for that. I just don't, I'm not comfortable with the PTA, and I know, no, none of you are, just not comfortable with the PTA having to feed kids every day like this.
No.
You know, getting a couple backpacks or something, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
But, but every day, lunch-
I think a flyer in the Friday folder is saying, you know, we're taking donations for-
Yep.
Absolutely.
They do that all the time.
You'd get them, you'd get them all, 100 more than you needed, so-
I mean, they don't do that in specific, but they reach out to parents and give them the big leads.
So, so again, thank you to Steve and Damaris, and obviously, the PTA and the town. The speed with which we took this on and have come to a resolution is pretty impressive for me, so, thank you, thank you, and praise all around. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, I have one other question. Just to be clear, we are expecting the grant from No Child Left Behind Title I Part A, and the $5,000 from the town's social services to substantially cover the costs. Where maybe not everything, but it's gonna be 90, 95%. We're expecting it to substantially cover the cost.
I would look at the high end of this to be 20,000, and I think the low end would be somewhere around 16,000. So, right now, we have 13,300.
For the year, or for a half?
For the rest of this year, from February 1st on.
So, we might be-
We, we could be, end up being as high as, uh, 6, 6, 7,000 in the whole, or as low as 1,000, 1,500, something like that. It's all gonna depend on Phase 2, which is my going and talking to individual vendors about the best price they can give us, about the best price they can give us, because the first one I had a conversation with went great. So if I can get them all to agree to what that first one agreed to, it, maybe it'll end up costing us $1,000, somewhere in that realm, over what we have here.
Great.
I also didn't take into account the half-days. So there's going to be a few half-days, too. I mean, I didn't want to do that, because I don't want to be exact like that, because then, you know, there could be other things that happen. What if two more kids move in or something that we need, or whatever it is? But, but, um, with, if you take into account the half-days and things like that, we may end up where it won't cost the board a dime, other than, you know, the, the money coming out of this grant here.
And there's, both of these, there's no strings attached with either, with either, either one of these, that's?
This is money that you have to, I mean, you don't have to take the money, but if you take it, this is the only things you can use it for.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to, if we do this, we don't have to start some other obscure program or anything where this is-
If we, if we want to move forward with the Free and Reduced Lunch Program, it's a big undertaking. It's something different than this.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just making, just want to make sure that I understand exactly what's going on with the money.
Anyone else? Now, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Resounding yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Yes.
They didn't say resound.
He did. Okay, on to new, new business. These will be items that we'll be taking action on at our next meeting. Dave, would you care to take us through the personnel?
Sure. At our next meeting, we'll be going through personnel items, it looks like one through two, one and two, unless something will be added.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need a contact?
No, that's good. Thank you very much.
Please. I felt like we were already kind of past that time, but whatever.
Okay. On to instruction and program. Mike, would you care to walk us through those?
Sure. At our next meeting, we have three resolutions that will be put forth. Two of them are the always exciting field trip request list and the weeding log for the library here at Valley View. The other one, probably a little bit more interesting to the public, which is the township district calendar for 2016 and 2017.
I have a quick question. So my question was more so, I guess it's inappropriate, since we're talking about calendars, that we're sitting on five snow days for this year, and I don't know if it's snow day.
Don't leave it.
Seriously, if you look at the weapons-
24 hours away.
I don't want to put this on the record now, but we have a plan, because I don't remember, I think it was supposed to be talked on to either Memorial Day or Spring Break, but I forget which one or how you order that.
It's now at our discretion.
Yeah.
Mr. Forte, I heard a specific word.
Yeah, it's out of, it's our discretion.
As I'm being forced at this point to be planning a vacation, do we have any idea in the world we can go?
I don't, I don't think we would recommend putting them on Spring Break due to the fact that Park starts right away. We would consider if, and also, I don't want to go and do something early like this, and then you have a blizzard in March. So we're looking to maybe make it a five-day weekend for, for Memorial Day, if we have all of them, doing things like that.
I will only say one thing about that, which traditionally, in the past, my time on the board, we actually have to, we had to give back snow days.
Yeah, I remember.
And we were asked not to put it on the backside of Memorial Day because of the eighth grade class trip, you don't want the kids not in school the day before that trip. So that's the only-
Maybe we'll do two days then.
It could be on the front side of it.
It's Thursday, Friday, Monday.
But they can't be on the backside of it, too many of them on the backside.
And I know we can't add, or we can't end the school day, or school year early. I know, somebody asked me a question, this is after-
Well, you usually, and I assume, I'm hoping, right now, we're already booked for graduation.
We might be able to do that, too.
Are we booked for graduation?
We're booked, but if Knowles can accommodate us the day before or something, why not? And, and there's no rule for a reason why you couldn't do graduation the next day anyway. I mean, there's a lot of, it's not a high school. High school has a lot more things involved.
We have to play hook, match, and graduations.
Yep.
Okay, just throwing it out there.
I think, I think this should be something we have a discussion about in February, and probably make a decision at the first meeting in March as to where we're looking to do. Because if, and I'll be a little bit more, you know, I'll be less conservative with the days, too. If there's a, if there's a day that's like a questionable one, we'll probably have a day off. It's, you know, everybody's like, wow, heaven and hawing, you know? We do, we do get a little bit tighter when it's, when you've used four and you're going into the year, even though, you know, we still take everybody's safety and security at heart, but maybe like a delay, maybe end up being a closure, you know, something like that.
Well, now that Mr. Napoloni brought it up on January 11th.
Snow tomorrow.
That's it. Five days in a row.
If I jinxed it, I'll take the loser of 96 coming.
All right, so now to discuss the actual thing on the, for vote at the next meeting. I think we sort of talked about this, I feel like I talked about this one before.
Yeah, we did. Don't look at that paper one you have in your packet, it's, there's a-
Oh, I was just about to say-
Look at the one that I emailed you. It's, it's, it has the debt, we do have, it has the second off. January 2nd will be no school day.
Yeah. And where did that come from?
That, that comes from our, um-
No, 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 where did the, where did the day we took away? Like-
It just extended the day one extra day.
You pushed out.
At the end of the year.
So then is the June day wrong also?
Yeah, look at the one I emailed you, don't look at this one.
But I can't look at it right now. But anyhow, I wasn't actually going to ask a specific question. What I was going to ask is, normally, and don't shoot me now, we speak with the-
All five districts?
The sending districts to the high school, we speak with the high school. Have they, has the high school approved theirs yet?
They haven't approved theirs, but they're on board with what ours is, too. He's approving his this month, too.
I sit, I will piggyback on saying that regardless of what we do, they will change it again if they approve, and it will get screwed.
I don't think they did this year.
We didn't change it this year. They didn't change it this year.
They did change it this year, but we have historically, things that happen to us on numerous occasions. But still, for families that bridge both districts, must at least try, I think, is the-
The, the long ones are going to be the same. They, they, their contract, and our contract's not the same.
No, I know, they-
There's a couple singles.
We have more teacher in-service days in our contract before school, than they do. So we'll never start on the same day, Monday, Tuesday.
And I moved our, our in-service dates to November 9th, so that it would be less choppy in October, because you'd have, you'd have no school for kids on the 10th, and then you'd have school on the 11th, then you have no school on the 12th due to the Jewish holiday.
No, and I think they'll-
So instead, we moved it to the 9th.
Adding it on to where you're already having days off makes a certain flow for families if they want to take advantage of it. And I will say, not really 100% seriously, that two years ago, when we were able to align the minimum day conferences-
No, be ready.
-to Halloween, everybody asked us to do that forevermore, and I explained to them
how Halloween actually does, keep moving.
Changes, yeah.
So, and I know that you do this in concert with your principals and your administrative team, so nobody was looking to have the conferences be the Thursday, Friday, and Monday, right, to keep it on Halloween.
And our contract says that they have to have it on that Friday, too.
Has to be the second.
Yeah.
It has to be Friday, yeah.
Okay, well, never mind.
Thursday, Friday, Monday would be it, then.
Well, the comp day has to be the Friday.
Yeah.
With no conferences, which means that conferences would have to be scheduled on Halloween, which is not a winter. Okay, just because I'd asked if they were really gung-ho about keeping it on-
This was sent to the union, too.
Well, it was the parents that were very gung-ho about this, and they don't get a voice, so I thought I'd listen to.
The only other thing I'll add is, in support of Mr. Napoloni and I, we would ask in the future to reference Parsippany's school districts, because our, it's both worked there. Unfortunately, the weeks never work out, but-
I'm sorry, that's directly in-
Or some of our staff might have the A's and Parsippany's-
As to the ethics code you guys signed off on last meeting, so.
I had a question about the, the books. See, are these?
On the way to the express.
Don't even have to ask a question about this?
I hope those are on the list.
The specific book?
Yeah. The whole set of encyclopedias from 1980?
2001, by the way.
If you want to laugh, go look at the computer section of one of those.
That's what I said, I hope that book thing showed me less.
It's a giant room of like switches and bulbs and vacuum-
Light bulbs and stuff, yeah.
That's all.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, move on to policy. Mrs. Lindsay, would you care to take us through policy?
At the next meeting, someone will be asking you to vote on your first reading for Policy 5111, eligibility of resident slash non-resident people. So just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, we all have a copy of it sitting here with us, it was sent to us at some point. Everything in italics is new and added, is that correct?
Everything in italics is new and added, and there's a-
There's a cross-off which changes when the new stuff is in italics.
A minor change, right. This is because we have, we currently have, we currently have one student paying tuition here who doesn't live in town, but we had a spot, so we, we let him stay, and they pay tuition. So this will cover us if we want to bring in tuition students, and cover us for the student we already have.
So this goes along with, the tuition part goes along with your merit goals, right?
One of, yep, that's one of the things, yeah.
And the second part, where you're just changing it from six months to three months, is about catching people earlier who didn't actually move into town?
Yeah, the six-month thing is pretty long, meaning, that means somebody could, somebody can come to you and say they're moving to your town, and they can come to school here for six months. Now, we have to track that and pay attention to it, and then they have to tell us. So now, they could be in our schools for six months without paying any tuition and then never move in. Now, I'm saying is that you, you get up to three months, but you also may have to pay tuition from the original enrollment date.
Yeah, that was the one.
Right, meaning, if I say yes, okay, you're moving in, great, and you don't move in, I don't just start pa, you don't just start paying tuition from the day you said you're not moving in, you start from the day you, you originally said you, your kid originally started.
And just for you newer board members, this has, that clause has been come up in my time on the board, for people who were building, I think was the specific instance, and didn't actually get their house finished, built, and then they had to have a hearing in front of them.
Yeah.
So don't think it-
Doesn't happen, never happens.
Couldn't happen, because it, I haven't been on the board that long. I'm still young. Okay, so at the next meeting, somebody will be moving up.
So one more quick question. So the section that's all added about the tuition for non-resident people, is that, and this is, I don't know the answer to this. Strauss asked me, do they look at, when we add wording like that, and they, okay?
I had a, I had a-
They reviewed that.
Yeah, I emailed it to him, and I talked to him on the phone, and, you know, he, he said, this is great wording, it'll help you, it'll help you with these kinds of things that come up, because if you, if you don't, you're still going to have problems, right? But if you don't have a policy, you have, you have a greater chance of a problem. Meaning, if you accept a kid who may not be a good fit for the district, and he ends up costing you money more than tuition because you have to send him out of district or something, you want this to, to be your, you know, safeguard here.
Okay. The only other question I have, which I was surprised at, so do we actually check for residency before going into sixth grade? I know we do in kindergarten.
That's in a different policy, or is this policy?
That's this policy, yeah.
Yes, we put that in in my time on the board, after a board-to-board where we heard about it from other districts, it's saving minimum money.
Yep. We did it, we didn't catch anybody with it, but one of the reasons we might not catch people is because we're pretty on top of it already, but you might, could have an occasional kid flips through, you know, falls through the cracks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions there? Seeing none, we don't, doesn't look like we have anything on finance, buildings, or grounds of transportation, so that brings us to good of the cost. Anyone care to start?
At what point are you going to do the?
I was going to do it now.
I had something for good of the cause. They're doing homework this afternoon. I made a copy, I made a copy of a persuasive essay where the student has to, a third-grade student had to highlight certain things in there, so, which, which is good. The topic on this one was lengthening the school year before it's too late. So it presented a, an opinion and a position where, you know, we should eliminate summer vacations, okay? It made a case for that. To me, that's kind of like, you know, a quasi-social issue that we have, I mean, I could argue it either way, so, and I don't know what all the other persuasive essays are that the kids are doing, you probably can't, maybe give me a, an answer for that, but I'm wondering if the students would be getting the, an opposite point of view also. They, for example, here, keep the school year as it is, or maybe even shorten the school year.
Is this a dental student thing you're talking about?
Yes, yeah, sure.
So you're wondering if, you know, first students are getting the-
An opposite point of view is being presented.
A fair point, counterpoint situation.
Yeah, a fair and balanced approach.
It depends on the unit, because the standard is such that it doesn't matter what your opinion is, you're supposed to read something and present the author's opinion, whether it's positive or negative. You're supposed to be able just to have evid, what does the author's evidence, and what's their opinion, not your own. But then there are some units where like they do the chocolate milk, should they have chocolate milk in the lunchroom, that's a popular one in fifth grade, and then they get to say their own opinion. So it really depends on what the unit is. Sometimes it's just, can you pick out what the author wants?
I think it's a unanimous opinion.
You'd be surprised what some of those kids have on it.
And holes chocolate milk. No, well, we're, we're-
Let's not go there.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, I'm just wondering if, you know, I'm very concerned, you know, just on a national level, as you what goes on at some of the colleges and everything, that, that our kids are being fed a certain type of information. It might be the author's opinion, but maybe it's a wrong opinion.
We don't judge them right or wrong opinion.
From my perspective, from my perspective. So I'm wondering if the kids, kids are just getting one type of opinion on everything, all right?
Be concerned about our, our kids being indoctrinated into a more liberal type of-
Yeah.
Like it happens in college.
Yeah, I would call it, you know, a, a, I would say going to school 12 months, you would be a, you know, a far-left viewpoint, or, but I'm saying, I mean, there's a lot of value in some of these topics.
Could be a right side, too.
You know, they, they work different jobs, they, they make some money. I, I think it's tremendous value when a kid having a, a summer job or a part-time job, where they interact with the public, all different types of people, and I know a lot of the, the high school students I work with, that help me coach soccer, they all have part-time jobs, they, they waitress, one's working in a, a dog grooming facility and everything, so they, they're getting a wealth of experience doing that, you know, I'm not diminishing the value of education. And we just had the big discussions on sleep, so they, so here, they're countering the sleep, you know? Child psychologists argue that children have schedules, live happier and healthier lives. Well, children are home, they sleep more, not good.
I promise you, that's not the intent of the assignment.
I, I, I just-
And it's not even, they're not to come up with their own.
Well, you know-
It's just reading an author's opinion, and can you pick out facts that support the author?
Do you, do you know that this is like a every week type of assignment, or just, it just comes, comes up periodically?
It's not every week, because it, it depends on what unit they're in, so if they're in-
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's not, that's not how we do writing.
Yeah. I just think the kids should be exposed to different viewpoints to help them make up their, their own mind. I understand they got to pick, pick certain things about, that are in the essay that I understand they gotta pick, pick certain things about that are in the essay that the author's doing, but I, I think it's healthy to get two sides of every story.
And they do.
And that rests my case.
Well, some, some units are, if it's an opinion unit, then they do. If it's a literary essay or non-fiction essay, then they don't, then it's put to the authors. Depends.
All right, thank you. There's nothing else right now. I think everyone got the committee assignments for this year. There are a couple of holes in some of the liaison appointments that I'm hoping somebody will raise their hand for. The Morris County School Boards Association isn't necessarily something we need one person for, we can all go to those meetings and generally, at least one or two of us usually do. So, if we want to put somebody down for that, but I encourage everybody to go to those meetings as often as they can, because I find them very informative and useful.
Yes, I would agree, the Morris County School Board Association, it's not even a once a month commitment, they have, I don't know, maybe it's five meetings a year, they alternate being out in another school district and very close to home for us in, this year at least, they negotiated a contract with.
At the Villa.
At the Villa.
The Villa.
So, they alternate between there and it's not, like I said, I believe it's like five meetings a year, so it's not a big commitment.
Do we need to represent?
And, no, you, you have one on file, but as Dino said, anybody can, anybody at any time from the board can attend and should because they have different information sessions. And if nobody's raising their hand, I could continue to serve as the Morris County School Board Association liaison.
Anyone else? Looking at you. All right, Mariana?
I enjoy the meetings, I always.
I like, thank you, thank you very much. The next one, the Morris County Educational Services Commission, now that one is a commitment the way I was explaining to me.
Okay, so I can explain this because I actually was about to raise my hand for this one and I actually had to tell Dino to pull my name back off of it when I found out. They meet, they've actually moved their January meeting, it is January 13th, which is later, it's actually the second Wednesday this month, which is in direct conflict with the Lakeview PTA. They are normally the first Wednesday of the month, which is in direct conflict with the Lakeview PTA, which is why I pulled my name off of there, and they do have no meeting in July. If, if you go, I will tell you this because this has happened and I'm sure Dave will agree with me, because this happened to him too, if you show up on the 13th, you will get picked to be on the Ed Services Board and then it's another board meeting.
It is.
With a packet bigger than ours, not that I'm trying to sell this research.
You were on it?
Yes, he took over for me when I dropped off when Lakeview's PTA meetings got moved to that Wednesday, and I don't know if he did it one or two years.
Mr. Napoloni.
Do you put me on there, I still got the paperwork.
He just wanted to show up.
Palardi, right?
Yeah.
But I showed up for the wrong meetings. They show up to put you on the executive committee or whatever.
If you show up on the 13th, you'll make the board, if you don't show up, then you most likely won't. Although last year, we didn't send anyone and I heard from board members on there, we just would show up, we would be on the board, I'm like, well, I think that's why nobody's sending.
But do you know who they kept sending stuff to?
To you.
Well, you were the last one that was there.
Yeah, that's terrible.
Which was so great, when I got off of it and you went straight on it, I, they stopped sending some.
I was conned into it, I think.
Okay, well, that, that really was a bad sales.
Yeah, that really, you weren't selling that at all.
But if you're free the first Wednesday of the month and you want the month of July off, this is the event.
The one for you.
On a positive note, they do give you a good dinner.
On a positive note, they do feed you, and, you know, you do actually learn, learn about shared services going on throughout the district.
They moved the Riverview PTA, so I'm gonna.
That's not my concern. You don't look me.
I can't do it, sorry.
Okay, all right, any takers? Doesn't sound like it, all right.
I, I can't take it because my wife is on the PTA and we need to have somebody home to watch the kids.
Okay. The other hole is delegate assembly.
Wait, 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 before you get to delegate assembly, well, we can talk about delegate assembly.
Sure, we can, we can, we also need to talk about board to board.
I was gonna say, I volunteer to go on board to board. I strongly recommend to you, Mr. President, that you assign three people, although people can sub in. The dialogue at the board to board is much better when viewed consecutively, as a person who's served on and off of it, the other boards do actually assign like a committee, then at least you don't have to relive the same dialogue every time new people show.
Okay. So, Mariana, you're.
I'll raise my hand for that, that's a very.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add Mr. Napoloni to that.
It's funny, because I heard Barb say, I don't even think it's a, Barb was saying that she wanted to be a part of it, but equally.
Okay, all right, so we have our three there.
Now you can want to delegate assembly.
Okay. Delegate assembly.
Does anybody want to explain again?
I would love to have it explained again.
Not really. This is another one where you continue to explain it and nobody.
You make it worse.
Well, I'll raise my hand for that, I really enjoyed it and I haven't done it in years.
Okay.
Pull your name in on each blank here, huh?
Nope, that's it, all logical.
Okay.
All right, I'll do Educational Services Commission, but I will refuse to serve on any additional.
All right.
Thank you.
Just the monthly commitment.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindsay.
Well, that's it, they don't give you anything else.
I'm gonna be talking to other things.
Oh, she's strong like me, I never was talking to anything else other than monthly commitment.
Okay, well, thank, thank you, Barb.
But just, no, it's the 13th.
Huh?
All right, that's, okay, that takes care of that.
I don't know what time the meeting starts and I, I assume they're still at the same location right on.
They kind of, but they just kind of make the space small.
He probably got the info already, he can just.
Okay, you'll forward it to her?
Yes.
With her packet and her.
It's a giant vanilla holder, I get every, every month.
But wait, it's, when I was on it, it was like a password protected part of the website.
They said you had actual paper?
It went back to.
It's a packet.
They were electronic before we were electronic.
What's her name, Kada, BA over there, she sends everything in paper now. Katerina, something?
Okay.
Do you remember, she's here in office.
It's the first.
Why did they do that? It was a password protected part of the website.
Every month I get a big, it's a different body else.
All right, I don't believe we have any committee reports, was there no correspondence? Any other discussion items?
Did we talk about vacations, Barb?
Yes, I think we did.
I'm in a lot of heat.
The only other thing I wanted to point out was January is School Board Appreciation Recognition Month, so I want to commend all of you for serving and thank you all for serving. And that's all I have. Anyone else?
Hold on.
Okay.
I'm here for the busing. I thought we were gonna be talking about that.
Yeah, we're gonna, you know, right now at 9:21, I'm gonna open up for public comments for anything germane to the district.
You'd have to get up.
And you have to approach the mic and.
It wasn't a planned thing, though.
But we were not.
It's not on our agenda.
But tonight, we weren't gonna be discussing it.
When we have discussed it in the past, we've put it in the presentation section or in the discussion section.
Don't remember that specifically.
No, I put, I put it in the Friday folder too, saying that we're gonna speak about it on the days we spoke about it.
You can go, I mean, do you want to give a?
But if you want, do you have a question, a specific question or anything? But just go up to the mic and say your name and.
Okay.
It's okay, you can just, just ask a question, but you have to go through the.
You have no prepared speech to remark.
That's fine, you can just ask, no, I have your.
State your name and address. Just state your name and address.
55 Lakewood Drive, Denville. Well, I was just wondering why in the world, since I know that we'd like to keep our, our school scores high, what, why wouldn't we want to keep the school, keep the kids going into middle school, since I love what Dr. Cullis had said about letting the middle school kids sleep later because that way they'll get better scores and raise the scores for the district, district. If they don't get any sleep, I don't know that that'll happen.
Okay.
No concern about it.
I mean, we, we saw a value in, in moving the busing time and we've been talking about it for a long time. I don't want anybody to think that this was something we talked about for one day. That was on our board, board packets, our board agendas for over a year now. We, we asked for public input, we, we all sat here and we, Dr. Cullis presented a, a presentation on the merits of it, and there are very strong cases for why middle school students should sleep later. We have a little bit different circumstances here because if we make these changes here and the kids have to go to the high school, we don't have the K-12 continuum that, that some other towns do, that, that's, that's something we have to look at, we can't just ignore that as a problem. Because the research is showing, Dr. Cullis presented this, is that adolescents will benefit from this. Adolescents are, is defined mostly in a school district from about seventh grade to 10th or 11th grade. So, if we, if, what'd you say? I'm sorry?
I said puberty, Jan said puberty.
Puberty, and, and from the research, we said, ground zero would be like seventh grade to 10th grade, or even 11th. So, we, we, we took everybody's, we listened to everybody, we put it out there, we wanted to hear from everybody, and we've decided that we're gonna go in a different direction. We're going to, we're going to make some changes to the busing and make, these aren't 100% yet because I still have to know if we can do it or not, whether or not we can actually physically bus kids in this manner. But if we can, we'd like to do a couple of things. One is commit to not have any student on the bus before 6:30 a.m., I mean, before 7:00 a.m. Right now, we have people on the bus at 6:30 a.m. We like to see if, from efficiencies and a little bit of an adjusting of the schedule, we can do that. Another thing we really would like to do is, and this is all explained, I'm just recapping it. Over the contract negotiations with the teachers, we were able to gain some instructional time. For one year, this year, we actually moved the middle school starting schedule almost 15, like 11 minutes earlier than it was. We, we all agreed, well, we're only doing it for one year because it's already too early, now we're adding it 11 minutes early, but we, we, as a group, decided, let's, let's leverage this extra time and not just waste it. So, the only way we could do it without having Riverview kids get home at 4:30 would be to start the middle school a little bit earlier. So, next year, we're committing to starting the middle school later, somewhere in the 7:45 range, and then try to put both elementary schools, again, I'm saying try because I'm not 100% sure we can do this yet, the, the greatest plan right now that we could do would be 7:45 start for the middle school and an 8:20 start for both elementary schools.
Too early.
Yes.
Right now, it's 8:30.
I really don't see how my daughter's gonna, it's gonna be horrible. It's gonna be horrible.
I, I understand, but let me just do it one at a time because you have to get up and say your same thing too. So, there's, there's a lot of pluses and minuses, I mean, there's a lot of pluses to this. One thing is, anytime we can get our staffs together at the same time, we can have meaningful professional development with both staffs on the same schedule. With our teachers' contract, we are limited. One of the things that limits us is actual geography, because by the time the teachers come over here, they have their lunch and do all that other stuff, sometimes we get a 30-minute meeting. Whereas we do it this way, we're looking at increasing it by 50%, hopefully, making it a 45-minute meeting. And on days when we have PD, professional development, we can have a morning meeting full time and actually have both schools on the same schedule, meaning it'll end at 12, just give me an example, they'll end at 12:30, there'll be teacher's lunch and then the meetings start at 1:30, and that, and that'll be for both schools. Now, we have it, meetings at Riverview start at 1:30, meetings at, at Lakeview start at 1:00, it just, it doesn't work.
Yeah, I definitely do agree that the, that the elementary should be together and more cohesive because the programming at Lakeview is so much better after school and things like that, or even during school. It's so much more of a broad program and things like that, and the Riverview schools never, Riverview school never benefited from any of that, and that's good that they're, that you're, that you're seeing, and I appreciate it very much that that's coming to be.
So, for right now, that's the, that's the, that's the plan, is to, to move to a, move the middle school back about 15 minutes and start Riverview about 15 minutes earlier and Lakeview about 15 minutes later, and do both schools at the same time. Still not 100% sure I can physically do it, that we can physically do this. If we can, that's gonna be the one I'm gonna recommend to the board for approval because the Board of Education has to approve the bus routes. They don't really have to approve the schedule, they have to approve the bus routes. So, obviously, I can't do it if you can't approve the bus routes, then I can't do it. But the board has been on board with this all along and we've all listened and heard a lot of different opinions.
But is there gonna be a, a survey of any kind, could it come out so that everybody has an input?
We, we did not put a survey out, we thought, we toyed with the idea of putting a survey out. I'm not opposed to it, but there's a process behind that, we would have to develop some type of a scientific survey with questions that actually answered what you're looking for, which is not as easy as it sounds. And then it has to go through the committee of the board, it has to go to the board because boards have to approve surveys of our parents according to our policy. And then, so it's something we could talk about, it's, it's not something I'm recommending at this particular time.
What is that?
I just feel like we, we vetted this, we've talked about it, we've gotten input from people, and there, there comes a point where we have to prioritize and start looking at other things. So, I wanna, I want, we're doing so many different things too, it's, you know, between all the B&amp;G projects we're doing, you heard here, the lunch, all these different things we're trying to get off the ground.
That's great.
I don't want to do, you know, 10 things not well instead of five things better. So, I think for this particular time, at this time, right now, the, the best course of action would be to do the one that we're, that we're recommending right now. And maybe, maybe we do revisit this, it's not like this has to be a dead issue. If we can do two-tier busing, we can make those changes some other day. As a matter of fact, the state may force us to do this eventually. The state may force schools not to start until 8:30 a.m. That's what, there's a bill right now to study this, not to actually do it, but to study it. It's probably 10 years, it's not gonna affect any of our kids. It's probably 10 years away if it ever happens, but it is possible that the state will mandate a start time of no earlier than 8:30.
Yeah, all the southern states do it and do it, they have no issue, I don't know. Why are we still behind? I don't know.
It's home rule here. They're all tiny little districts, not like in, you know, in other states, the whole county is the district, so it's sometimes easier to do something on a larger scale than it is to get some traction on the, all the little tiny districts. Especially for us, we all feed into the, to the regional district, which is on their own schedules.
Well, yeah, they're never gonna change, I get that. Can dream, right?
Yeah.
I do want to thank you because I know that you've read all the articles that I've been bringing out, I do appreciate that.
I've passed it all along to everybody, sure.
Your responses and, you know.
Yeah, because people would said, oh, there's no surveys, there's nothing, there's no studies on middle, well, yes, there is, I just found 10 of them online.
Yeah, there's studies.